...town council meeting for April fourteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Please come to order. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance in a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Okay. Item two is public participation. I think the public is on spring break. But seeing none, we will close public participation and move on to approval of prior minutes for March thirteenth, two thousand and fourteen. Budget deliberations?
So moved.
Any corrections or discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Right. For March twenty-fourth, two thousand and fourteen?
So moved.
There is a correction in the paragraph with regard to the Century Enterprise Center grant. It said Commissioner Smith had visited, and that's incorrect. It was Commissioner Estey. He was here with the Congresswoman. Congresswoman Estey. So that's the correction I would offer. Anything else? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Item four is reappointments.
I'll move James Armack and Ken for the Economic Development Commission for alternate position. Dates twelve oh one, two thousand and thirteen to eleven thirty, two thousand and fifteen.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Traffic authority?
I can make a motion, Mayor, for traffic authority. Richard, Pete, and Licky, these are all remote and Aitito and Robert Edwards Hannah. Dates twelve oh one, two thousand and thirteen to eleven thirty, two thousand and fifteen.
Any discussions? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Traffic authority? Alphonnet?
I can make a motion, Mayor, for traffic authority. Alphonnet Christopher J. Cutter. Term twelve oh one, two thousand and thirteen to eleven thirty, two thousand and fifteen.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Don't really have any. It's been pretty quiet, knock on wood, comments. So I'll move on to item six, which is a request from the Historical Society.
So moved.
And so we're closing off the Southern Crossover Road for the Annual Art Festival on Saturday, June ten to six, and Sunday, June fifteenth, two thousand and fourteen, noon to five. Any discussion?
We'll adjourn now.
It is you.
I'll be tense.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Tonight, we have our Parks and Rec Director here to give you a little update on what's been going on with the Parks and Rec.
Good evening, everyone.
This is one of those five-minute?
Five minutes?
You know everything.
Okay. Well, first of all, I want to thank you for setting aside some money so we could get our irrigation system up and running. Just about finished all the work, underground work. Everything was moved above ground through the backflow preventers. We have to have McCourie come out and inspect it, but we're good to go for the season. Thank you for that. Just a quick few of our programs. We had a Easter egg on April fifth. We have three hundred-plus children there, so it's a great success regarding our softball league. Tonight's opening night, we have thirty-four men's teams and nine women's teams this season. All of our eighty-three boat slips have been sold, which is a great thing. Let's see, what else do we have? We're in the process of completing all our interviews for summer camp counselors, lifeguards. So we're going through that process right now. Park maintainers are busy getting all the carts ready, all the athletic fields ready to go. And that's about all I have. If you have any questions that you have, just to let you know, our one other thing is our credit card and new recreation management system is going very well so far since July last year. We have had nine hundred and thirteen credit card transactions, five hundred and fifty checks, and eighty-five people paid cash. So it's doing very well.
Any questions? Question? Sounds good. All right. No question? When, you want to give update on where we are with Lynn Demming Park?
Tom Beecher, our chairperson, has sent a letter to First Light just to let him inform them of what is going on with that. Once we get their okay to go ahead, then we'll start the rest of our process, going for our permits and finalizing all the plans. So we want to have everything wrapped up, and we want to be able to break ground late winter next year. We can just go until we can actually have, we're hoping to have everything done for next year, one-year process, we hope.
Okay. Joe?
No, I think, I don't want to make it too quick. Couple things. I'm glad to see the credit card system is so successful. Percentage-wise, just off the top of my head, you're looking at ninety percent of people are using it now.
That's very well.
So it's had to have made it more efficient for your office.
Definitely.
It definitely makes it a lot more accessible to individuals at any time of day and night. And that's a great thing, you know, parents don't have to run down to the rec department to sign up their families. It's good to see that Lynn Demming is moving, the sooner that whole project is put together, up and running, and we've got that place as nice as we want it to be. We've allocated it to be a very nice thing. Last, there's been some conversation with some of the town council people about access to the green for a variety of organizations and what is and isn't allowed on the green, such as, just off the top of my head, wine tasting during the tasting event. The indication is are so restrictive, not open to expanding what we can do on the green and opportunities. Everything needs to be moderate, but we need to know that this green, which is there for the community, allows some expansion of what we use it for. We have a nice green. We're not looking to run massive parties and destroy it, but I think we need to be open to suggestions and opportunities for organizations to do a little bit more and know that they have access to such a beautiful place and that we're not overly restrictive, but there's a concern that some of the people on the commission are have such once avenue minds that they're not open to the discussion of alternatives. So I'd like to see that taken into consideration with the commission.
So you want Dan to go back and express that to Jared?
I would appreciate that. I think several council people have a voice and concern for that area, and that it be open for discussion and that we consider. That brings more people to center of town, brings more people in on the weekends if we allow just a little bit more flexibility in what's used for. Some of the things, when it's used, we consider instead of shut down just because someone might have an opinion. It's not only as one individual or two individuals, I think it's appropriate for the town, only serve an entire large community.
Thank you. Katie?
Yeah, just to bring that up, I'll just say that, yeah, you only have that ordinance that passed a couple of years ago to, one of the purposes of that, to allow people to have a permit, which needs the police and the mayor's approval, so that it could bring more people to town and help with fundraising, community, and that kind of thing. Of course, the green is lovely and, you know, it's so close to all the new things that we have going on in town, so it's gonna be, I had a question for you, it just popped in my mind. How do you choose or select who gets one of the slips? Is it a lottery?
Originally, when I first started, it was a grandfather policy, and that was probably one of the first things that I really pushed change because it got to be more of a country club atmosphere. But with the way the economy has gone, for a while, we've got rid of both slips without any problem. And then the last probably four or five years, we've had a waiting, have not had a waiting list. We've been trying to, had to really wait to the last minute. We actually opened it up last year and had one out-of-town person for the first time ever. So a lot of voters have come to us and asked us, could we try grandfather policy one more time? And we thought about it for a couple of years, and this year was the first time that we went back to the grandfather policy.
So how does that?
So what happens is up until March first, the people who had a boat slip prior years could come in and register and keep their spot. Let's see if I have my notes here on that.
So the same person, or is it the same family?
Same family can come in and get the slip again. So this year, probably about sixty or so people came back from last year that had a slip. And starting March first, we opened it to everyone else. That first day, that first week, we probably got rid of another thirteen or so. And actually, last Friday, we just finally got rid of the last one.
And what does a slip cost now?
Twelve hundred dollars.
And it's for, doesn't matter the size?
Well, we are limited, depending on the slip. Some slips are smaller, some are larger.
Oh, I see. So sixteen-foot or fourteen-foot, you put it?
Yeah, we have to place that.
So in fact, if those sixty people, their families want to, they can decide to do it, then you would carry that?
Yes. Until someday, if the economy changes and we start getting a waiting list like we used to have, then we can go back to original registration.
Was the non-resident, you said you had a non-resident one?
They weren't grandfathered.
Did they pay more?
Yes, they paid fifteen hundred dollars, but they were not grandfathered because they were not.
Yeah, yeah, good.
All right. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Of course, I did have a big note here on my desk that I did actually have something I wanted to add to comment, and that was, remember, we joined the prescription drug program? And so that's been a year. Eight hundred and fifty-eight claims have been made, and residents have saved over forty-one thousand, two hundred dollars from that little prescription.
Is that since?
Since April two thousand and thirteen to now.
April, right. Thanks.
Nice.
Item A is a request to accept a three hundred dollar donation from Connecticut Community Foundation.
So moved.
Second. Discussion? Do you have the revenue account? You could put those in in the minutes as expressed in item A. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Of course, we should advertise the program. We're going to purchase food for a special free card program held in May titled Investing in Your Future: Services to Help You Age Gracefully at Home. It's something that we all need to take.
Those are by Hans Kolkrath.
Hans Kolkrath, yeah. Nine, Children's Center. Pete?
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolution resolved that Mayor Patricia Murphy is empowered to enter into or amend contractual instruments in the name and on behalf of New Milford with the Connecticut Office of Early Childhood for a child daycare program. If such an agreement is offered and to have a corporate seal fixed to hold documents required as a part of any offer decree.
Any discussion? This is the one we do every year, the Children's Center, as required by the state. I have the paperwork for everyone to sign. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Item ten is a generous gift. If somebody would make the motion, then I'll tell you over there. Pete?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for the request to accept a donation to Matted and Framed Original Newfield Paintings from Webster Bank, one of the Boardman Bridge nineteen seventy-three, and a second of Level D Peak Bridge nineteen seventy-five.
So if you look right over there past the county, you'll see that painting, and then the other one is down in the office, in my office, and over the copier. You can see it when you go by. Webster Bank had invited us in to see if there was anything we could use. So we were looking at desks and chairs and things, and they did give us some desks. I know the police were over there picking up some furniture, and I said, well, what are you doing with the artwork? And she said, oh, we'd love to donate that to the town. So it's very exciting, very exciting.
There's no missing.
We didn't want to, they are bolted to the wall, just so you know. Maybe we should swap those out for prints, huh? Do best, hang those. But, yeah, they're beautiful, so we are sending thank you notes, but I did want to make sure that they did get the public acknowledgement of such a beautiful donation.
A motion.
All in favor of acceptance?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstain? Item ten B is a little bit different. This comes to you due to some concerns that I have had, to my offered by quite a few people. I've asked Randy to put this together and to explain to you exactly what it means and what it doesn't mean with regard to panhandling control ordinance.
Good evening.
Evening, Mayor Randy.
This came to me through Mayor Murphy because of complaints that she was receiving from people really pertaining to aggressive type behavior that's happening in the street. This, almost exclusively, from what I understand, this type of behavior really happens to women from what I'm understanding. This is anecdotal. I have no empiricism on that, but I have asked around when the mayor ordered you to review the Danbury ordinance and to work on it. What we've done is we've done a comprehensive constitutional history review on this, very very in-depth, and we've gone nationwide in looking at ordinances and statutes that pertain to this type of problem. The Danbury ordinance is very, very good one, but we've changed it significantly. We've changed it in a way that defines the violation to be that of aggressive behavior rather than passive behavior. And we've done that for a variety of reasons. We've looked at all the constitutional cases on the point and including in the trial courts or district courts. And this ordinance is designed to address specific types of behavior that are considered reasonably to be coercive, intimidating, threatening, and things of that nature. I believe it passes constitutional muster on the academic sense. I believe that it passes constitutional muster on a real-world sense. I cannot speak for the political sense of it, but I will tell you, I've read these cases. Our legal intern has read these cases, and another partner has read these cases, and I believe that this ordinance is going to be, would ultimately be sustained by a reasonable trial court. This answers, this response to the question is presented to me, or as the, as the matrix of issues presented to me by Mayor Murphy and the concerns based upon the concerns that she has developed related to complaints and comments she's received in her office. This is not something that was knocked off, if you will, you know, in the summer. And questions I'm happy to answer.
Katie?
Yes, thanks, Randy. Question about, you mentioned the fact that it's harassment, and yes, I agree with you that female seems to be getting more of that attention. Fine, and here, I guess what I'm looking for is I see words, actions, gestures, signs, and other means, anything short of actually touching someone.
Touching themselves.
Right, I'm saying, so I realize that. So as long as, if you're just talking, if you're saying something, does that include a wolf whistle? That's what it's called. No.
Like?
Yeah, yes.
No, I wouldn't think so. That puts down the dress.
Okay, so we're not, we're not going too far.
Oh, no, we're not going to control speech. No, not even attempt to control speech.
But if someone were to feel threatened, how about if someone feels offended?
No, it doesn't do it.
Threatened.
It's gotta be, if you take a look, and that's a great question, if you take a look at, to be determined on a prohibited acts, on the back page of this, the actual violator of conduct is in number one and number two regarding the conduct that you're talking about. No person engaged in aggressive panhandling in any public place within the town of New Milford, aggressive panhandling. That's defined in the first.
Right.
To constitute a violation, that conduct must be such that it exhibits a specific intent, which is a criminal, it's called mens rea, unintended, to threaten, intimidate, or coerce one of those three things. The recipient to comply with a request or demand for money or other goods or a favor on behalf of the violator. So there must be an intent, reasonable intent, in other words, a reasonable person interface together with a demand or a request. And that can be done by conduct, right?
Right.
You hear my face?
You hear your personal face, right.
That's what I'm talking about. So there needs to be some, it can't be just say, hey, man, come on. That's not the conduct you're worried about.
And the other question I had was about the, I understand, the definition of twenty-five foot distance. It says any bus or train station stop, does that include a school bus?
Yes, it would.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pete?
Thank you, Mayor. To move along, the question, I'd like to propose, Randy, what do you want the council to do this evening?
You just need to send it to a public hearing.
I would like to make a motion to send this to a public hearing. If I get a second, I'd like to address it. Thank you.
Madam American, we put that in as a motion. The attorney could ask for some kind of question first.
I ask anybody any questions.
Yeah, I still have questions. Okay, we're gonna have questions during the, the motion's on the floor. You'll continue with your questions. We just wanted to have the motion for the day.
Okay, fine.
And I'm just looking in the camera.
All right, fine.
Randy, just first of all, I'm going to read into the minutes, just the purpose. Do you have the purpose? So the purpose is that this ordinance is to preserve all persons right to be free from harassing, disruptive, obstructive, and intimidating behavior by individuals engaged in panhandling or begging to maintain and protect the physical safety and well-being of the public and to foster a safe and harassment-free climate in public places within the town of New Milford by curtailing such behavior. So my question is, would the ordinance be something that law enforcement would need to protect the safety of someone that feels they're being aggressively panhandled?
According to the conversation I had with Chief Boyne, is this would be very helpful in order for his officers to charge as less than a felony or less than something that might not be, might not be in the cards. So I spoke with the chief today, and he said that this is a very helpful tool because it doesn't go so far. It's not like the Danbury ordinance is much broader, this is narrower. This is, this is not inappropriate behavior. This is harassing, disruptive, obstructive, and/or intimidating. It's gotta be one of those things. It's not just inappropriate, because I don't think it's appropriate, you see? And that's the point, it sets a standard that is, that is a level below felony.
And I noticed in number two of your definition, number C, to beg in a manner intended to obstruct or which regardless of intent actually obstructs pedestrian and vehicular traffic.
Right.
So that's not only a safety issue for the person that's panhandling, but for the people in the car, pedestrians that could be walking.
It's actually exactly right. Your analysis is right on. It's everybody's safety. If somebody's gonna get hurt by a car, or backing up is gonna get hit by a car going by, or somebody is gonna be stopped to stop signing, get ruined, or a light get ruined, or that's what happens, and that's how this stuff happens, and that's what's designed to protect the whole penalty of that.
Right. I'll defer for now, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor.
So I just have some questions about the penalty.
Sure.
Would this person be issued like a ticket?
Yes.
A ticket?
Yes.
Okay. And who's going to determine this shall be fined not more than two hundred and fifty dollars? So it could be less than two fifty, you're sure?
Well, it's a prosecutor, prosecutor.
Okay, so they're gonna have to go to court and be fined? I guess the only problem I have with the penalty piece, and I, you know, I mean, there has to be some repercussion, obviously, but, I mean, most of these people are begging because they have enough money, for the most part. I mean, there's always some people that are, you know, but, you know, so they don't have any money to start with, so then you're gonna take them to court and fine them two hundred and fifty dollars, and it's, it almost seems like it's just gonna perpetuate the whole situation. They're gonna go back out, because they don't have any money, and do the same thing all over again. I don't know.
I'm telling you, it's exaggerated.
I just, it seems kinda crazy that we're going to, I mean, most of these people are probably homeless or, you know, drug or alcohol addicted or whatever, and I just don't see how are you gonna get the two hundred and fifty dollars over, and who's even gonna come from that?
I don't either.
And then, then we pile up the whole, everything on the court and the legal system and more expenses, I don't know. If there's some other, something other than a penalty, that could be.
I don't know of any other enforcement mechanism under the statute.
So like, how has this worked in, like, Danbury already has something like this similar in the past, and what happens, do they get a, do they get fined two hundred and fifty dollars, is that?
Danbury gets fined a hundred and fifty dollars, I think. And, but the reality is that what they do is they behave, they modify the behavior. That's the police department, that's my information. I didn't get that directly from the town attorney's, the city attorney's office, I got that from somewhere else, that it really modifies behavior is what they're trying to do. Nobody cares about somebody playing the guitar in the corner, if you know what I mean, but...
Yeah, I get this whole piece, because nobody likes to be harassed like that and threatened, and you do have a right to public safety. There's no question about that, but I just, it just seems like, I would like to see, like, do they have any statistics in Danbury as to?
I don't know.
If, you know, isn't like a high rate of recidivism or?
I don't have any data. I only have anecdote information, as I said earlier, because I don't have any persons.
Can we get that? Can we get that information?
Right, to see if they have any numbers on it, I'd be happy to ask.
It'd just be interesting to see, and then, and what happens to these people that don't have two hundred and fifty dollars?
They might go to jail.
Now, West Harford locks, West Harford, I think, locks them up. I think they actually lock them up in West Harford. Put them in stir for a while.
I mean, if they're obviously really physically threatening, that's a whole different thing.
Well, that's, yeah, that's, yeah, yeah, that's, 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 that's all. That's gonna be something that's, that's gonna be potentially a felony, you push somebody or out, you know.
So if Danbury's asking for a hundred and fifty, why are we asking for two hundred and fifty?
Because it's the maximum amount, I put that in there, just because that's the maximum.
I asked them for the maximum because I'm trying to deter behavior. We're now experiencing people banging on your car window, saying, I want money. And I've had, I'd say dozens of women, and seven of them in person.
Where is this happening, like in the supermarket?
In our downtown.
Like right on the green or?
No, no, no. All around the downtown. And once at CBS, once at Big Y, and then the rest are all in the downtown, and twice to me. And when you get up in my face, and I don't, you know, shrink back that quick, I'm figuring there are a lot of people that are a little more timid than... I'm figuring there are a lot of people that are a little more timid than me, and now...
I mean, that's definitely, it's unacceptable behavior.
If it's scary to be in downtown New Milford, Connecticut, there's an issue. And this is all I have awfully to address it, is to request an ordinance to put another tool in the tool belt, or the toolkit for the police to try and address it.
I don't know, it'd be interesting to see what, the ordinance.
Be happy to see what any of the...
I'll be happy to do that, I'll be happy to do that.
Or anybody else, or, you said Milford does this too?
I, I, you know, I'm not, I'm, I'm not sure, but, but for some reason, in the recesses of my mind, there's one town that actually locks, locks people up, and, uh, and, and I'm, I'm, I'm wondering. I'm thinking it's, it's that, but I might be wrong, but I'll check, I will check, just for information.
Walter?
Most of my thoughts or comments were used up early, but when I, when I first read this, you know, I said to myself, uh, you know, what, what is prompting, prompting this? Why is it necessary? And I said, you know, sometimes the rule of law, uh, can box you into a corner, and then it makes the system, I think, inflexible and unbending, but, uh, uh, council, uh, lady, uh, wondering, my comment was, well, if you're gonna find two hundred and fifty dollars, they can't pay it, what are you gonna do with them? You lock them up then? And who's gonna pay for that? A verb, a verb to the taxpayer, a taxpayer. Yet on the other hand, after listening to, uh, the conversation there, I think this will serve the community well. So I'm, I'm in favor of it.
Thank you, Joe.
A couple thoughts. First, on a penalty phase, the only one that could assess a dollar amount on an individual for a violation would be a court.
Right.
So, that is not, we, we can't set the fine, the courts will set the fine, and they'll do it what they deem is appropriate, whether it be fifty, or a hundred, two hundred and fifty. I also think that if, if someone gets, uh, hit with the violation, uh, is found guilty and hit with a fine, and they don't pay it, then eventually you'll end up with a warrant, and you will get locked up.
Yeah, that's a heard, that's a prosecutorial decision. She'll decide, she or he will decide what to do with it.
I normally, um, in, I'm not in favor, under normal circumstances, of additional ordinances when we have laws on the books that can be used to enforce. I don't, I, I think, I'm just a person who believes we don't, additional laws don't normally serve us, uh, a lot of purpose, other than what I, any of my own terms, make people feel good, but, this appears to be, and I'll use some terms that we know, narrowly tailored to, to meet the need, uh, of this particular type of behavior. Otherwise, it would end up unconstitutional, uh, at some point, when it's tested in court, but there's always the courts to test this. So, it, it's, it, it, in my opinion, this is a very narrow form of behavior. Offensive behavior is not, well, there's a lot of offensive behavior, that is truly free speech. We may all disagree on where that level is, but this is, I think, sufficiently narrow. And then we would leave it to the courts. The fines are really up to the, the courts, the judges to determine, and that's, we don't get that opportunity. So that allows an additional level of protection. The court could find someone if they want.
Can I respond, Randy?
Please.
Your point is exactly right. The reason that this is drawn differently than the Danbury ordinance is because I believe the Danbury ordinance is, is, I don't want to say old, is broad. It says, it, and the Danbury ordinance reads that the purpose is to preserve persons' rights, uh, to be free from inappropriate behavior. Inappropriate behavior is a personal issue, um, I mean, and it's, and it's vague. What the mayor wanted is she described specific conduct, is what she wanted to, to, to...
Threaten.
To, to control, the threatening, the threatening part, and that's what we've tried to do. Interesting, Joe, you obviously, you know some of these cases, because you've just talked about it. The U.S. Supreme Court, in a two thousand case, a very, very well drawn case, and it was written by a liberal member, and further into the state's police power, the state may not curtail speech simply because the message is, is offensive, that's the language it's used, but the state is permitted to restrict a speaker's right, free speech, to protect listeners from unwanted or undesired communication, because the court in that case said, while the freedom to communicate is substantial, the right of every person to be left alone is in the same level. So, if you're walking out of a store, and you can't get out without, you know, you know, come on, come on, come on, you can afford it, come on, come on, that is threatening larceny coercive behavior. My point is that you're a captive audience at that point. You have to go out that door. You have a right to be left alone. And that right is not trumped by somebody's right of speech. They're co-equal. And a matter of fact, one of the law school professors used to say, and Frank, I heard this, your rights, your personal rights, go as far as your nose. They can't go into somebody else's nose. And it's interesting, early on in, in our police chief's career here, we talked about issues, not this particular issue, he's, you know, people's personal rights go as far as their nose, so obviously, whether that's the same law school professor, but, but that's the point. Offensive is one thing, get out of my, you know, fighting words are another thing, this is different, this is intimidating, coercive, threatening, and that's what the mayor described. And that's this, this is very narrowly tailored, very narrowly tailored.
So I, I can accept this.
Thank you. Katie?
Just, what's done now? I have personally witnessed someone walking across the green and having this, and I saw it occur, and they just, you know, got away as fast as they could and kept going. So, in the current state, I would have to either be lucky enough to see it out right there, or go up to the PD and make a complaint, describe the offender best I could, or whatever, right? So how is, how is this changing except the, except the action that now can be taken against the offender if they're identified correctly, right? So, okay, we didn't have an ordinance. Right, but is there now an existing statute that would cover this?
There are statutes, but the statutes tend to go a little bit farther, obstructing a public way with an intention to obstruct a public way with a...
Okay, I get it.
Or disorderly conduct, has created general disorder. This really fills a gap, and it's a small, it's a, it's, it's not as, I mean, as serious as, as, as being charged with, uh, with, with a, with a, with a crime.
Right, okay.
It's, it's behavior modification.
Yes, and I understand that's the, the goal of it, and, and so the incarceration, the fine is set by the judge of the court when they get there, and then, if they have no money, because I agree with Mary Jane, that you're really dealing with people where a fine would almost, they might just laugh at you, because, sure, if I had two hundred and fifty dollars, or a hundred dollars and fifty dollars, I wouldn't be doing this, I mean, not that I think they would all say that, but, um, so incarceration, I know, is used in, in lots of places, if you can't pay the fine for many violations. So there is the opportunity that that could happen.
No, it's not, it's not an option.
Well, 'cause that's a good motivator for behavior change.
But what you can't do is, like in Virginia, you can say thirty days or thirty dollars to do that, but they still do.
We can't do that.
And we can't do that. Actually, Virginia, Virginia doesn't do that. In the, in the recent past, they've changed that, but, but, uh, there's no either or, because what that does is it exchanges you for a debtor's person. But the reality is that, is that the prosecutor will recommend, if this, if the prosecutor's gonna prosecute this, tell, tell this person, you know, the public defender will plead for this guy, and whatever, and what'll happen is the prosecutor will put some conditions on it, and they'll move on, or they'll, whatever.
They don't, don't do that.
Something like that. I don't know how effective that is, but, but it has, at least it shows the police presence. And, uh, and/or the judge will set a fine, if, if they, or they'll agree with a fine, something like that, where they'll agree to community service, things of that nature.
Well, in, in general, I, I, I've certainly, you know, seen myself, uh, been in front of one of them, and I've seen it, so I think definitely we need to address it, I mean, important that. I guess I would just say that I would hope that there's an increase, I mean, I know we usually have a patrolman, at least one, around. Uh, I think the key to this is that there's someone to go to, because a lot of people, as I saw someone, I could not believe that she didn't turn around and say, did you see that? Where are the cops, you know, or whatever, but she just kept on going, go shopping. And, and that kinda defeats everything, you know?
Well, part of, part of the issue too is that there is no local ordinance for a police officer to go over there and discuss with a person, that, that's not acceptable yet. There's no ordinance.
Well, I would just like to see along with this, to have, to know that in our, you know, our downtown's not that big, and I know that there's somebody around most of the time, just to, but I think overall I could support this, um, in the way it's written, 'cause it is narrow enough that I don't think it would be in somebody's nose.
Thank you, Pete.
Thank you, Mayor. Randy, as far as a penalty, or as far as the ticket itself, I mean, the ticket itself is actually gonna be a discretion of the officer. Is that correct?
The officer, right, the officer can be...
So the officer's other skills that she already has. So the other officer's been trained to deal with the public at large, can kinda connotate whether it would be an aggressive panhandle, or not aggressive.
Well, it has to be aggressive, it has to be aggressive, it has to follow this, has to...
Correct.
Yeah, you can't say, well, I think that's aggressive.
So the officer would be the one that would make that determination.
Right, whether the conduct was, well, full, uh, whether it fell within this prescription, yes.
And within the prescription, I mean, prohibited acts, to me, number one, no person may engage in aggressive panhandling in any public place within the town of New Milford. To constitute a violation of subdivision, the violator's conduct, conduct must be such that it exhibits a specific intention to threaten, intimidate, or coerce the recipient, the recipient to comply with the violator's request, or demand for money, goods, or, or favor on behalf of the violator or some third person.
That's specific, yes.
Right, so that specific case is you're protecting a citizen of New Milford from an assault, almost.
Well, you, you're, yeah, you could, you could say that, but it's not a technical assault.
Correct.
It's, it's essentially a demand, and it's intimidation, it's, yeah.
So, we go to, so there's a narrow descriptive there. So number two, no person may engage in panhandling or begging in any public transportation vehicle within twenty-five feet of any bus, train station, or stop.
That's a complaint about the, the bus.
Right, so I'm thinking, I, I'm thinking, you have a child that gets right off here on Railroad Street, so, to me, I mean, that, to me, there's another safety issue, that's pretty, pretty, pretty narrow, and it's descriptive, right?
Right.
Okay, so number three, no person may engage in panhandling or begging on school grounds. I mean, that's pretty easy. Uh, number four, no person may engage in panhandling or begging within twenty-five feet of any automatic television.
There's a reason for that.
Well, of course, and I think, again, thing coming to my mind, is safety.
Right.
Does a person withdrawing their money out of, out of the ATM?
It's stuff that you and I take for granted.
Exactly.
Repeat, but, but, you know, women may not take that for granted, if they see somebody hit a television. I don't think it works for them, I'm an idiot.
So, number five, Randy, no person may engage in panhandling or begging from the operator or any occupant of a motor vehicle. And that's something that we just talked about before, not only is it being a safety issue for the person that's panhandling, but the person driving the car, the passengers in the car, the other people walking around, I mean, that to me could just be, you know, you're preventing a major accident there. So, number six, no person may engage in panhandling or begging has to require patrons, customers, clients, or pe- patients of any business to take evasive steps to avoid physical contact with the violator while such pastry is entering or exiting any place of business. And to me, I kinda connotate that also as not only being a safety issue for the patron that is establishing the business, but also the safety for the person that's panhandling, because, let's say they're going out and they're panhandling, uh, and it's, uh, the bottom of the ninth, Yankees end up losing, or Red Sox are walking out of the bar, and not a too happy mood, and someone's trying to pester something, oh, you're gonna have a...
I hadn't thought of that.
You're gonna have a safety issue there.
Potentially.
I hadn't thought of that.
And the thing I congratulate you on, Randy, is it's a very narrow descriptive of things, to me, that affect the safety of everybody in the town. I mean, all sides, and to me, it should be something that, you know, it's just common, just common sense.
That's a very good point, because that's exactly the point. It's, 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 it's...
Protecting all parties.
It's a person about everything. It's, it's, it's concerning the person too, the, the, the panhandler too. I mean, that, that happens. People get hit by cars all the time in New York City.
And the, and the thing that I'm hoping is if, is if the motion does go through tonight, and we do set up a public hearing, and it does go through, and I hope that we can, and I'm sure the mayor already has, has in there plans, is giving this to, a copy to social services, to loaves and fishes, so that, so that people are educated onto what this could entail. And I'm sure, and I can't speak for anybody, but I'm sure that in the beginning, I'm sure that people will be, you know, like anything else, you know, people, warnings and all that, but, I mean, I'm gonna fully support it. Thank you.
And then please, Katie? Do we have currently a public intoxication ordinance?
I do not believe we do.
Do we have a vacancy ordinance?
And we, no.
So I would like to suggest May twelfth, um, for the public hearing, if that's, this is very important. Will give us time to warn it, you know, so the public...
Oh, all right, I'm sorry.
You left that information for the town council over before you got to the panel.
Okay. And one other question, um, can the police officer just give out a warning, or?
Oh, sure.
That's their discretion, they always have their discretion, Mary Jane. Which is half the time how people find out that, is the police officers will come, um, that's unacceptable, and, you know, we have a regulation on that.
So the next time I see you doing it.
That's right, usually you hear that, like, the next time I...
Well, I have never heard, I'm actually probably gonna read it online.
Well, many people are on the library tab.
No, I don't, I think that's how you find it.
But they're probably not looking up ordinance, yeah, exactly.
Right. You're not reading it, it's been...
Even people, for traffic infractions, police officers have discretion and can say to someone, okay, so, you know, you made a mistake or something, don't let it happen again. Is, uh, would May twelfth be acceptable to put this on for public hearing? Do we have a council meeting that night?
So?
All in favor of the motion to send this forward to a public hearing for May twelfth?
All right.
Opposed? Abstained? Thank you, Randy.
You're welcome.
Okay, item C is the Neighborhood Assistance Act, which allows people to accept money or organizations think, uh, culinary school, we, this is our, is this the third year? I think it's the third year where we've done this, so it's a culinary school, is one of the local agencies that participates in this program. Pete?
Senator, I'd like to move, uh, that the town of New Milford, uh, town council approves the New Milford's participation with the twenty-fourteen Connecticut Neighborhood Assistance Act program, and all the eyes, Mayor Patricia Murphy, to set a public hearing for Monday, June ninth, twenty-fourteen, at seven fifteen P.M., to consider program proposals.
And, um, the reason for it being so far in advance, and having a brain cramp, Tammy?
The reason I'm asking for it so far in advance is so that with this public legal notice that will go out with a public hearing, the applications are made available to any nonprofit that wishes to complete it and return it prior to that hearing date.
And Mayor, I would personally like to thank Tammy for having this early, because we heard from federal council members through budget deliberations that there may be opportunities to access different funds, and I applaud your staff for doing that. Thank you, Mayor.
Any other comments? All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstained? The, item D is for the town meeting, the annual town meeting? To set a date? Yes, I do have a date. April twentieth or May twel- May twelfth? No, I'm thinking for...
May thirteenth?
Uh, January, February, March, April twenty-ninth, or, for a town meeting, and then a referendum?
May thirteenth.
May thirteenth, because the registrars need time to amass, um, that forty people to work the polls.
I'm, I'm just shaking my head to myself, sorry.
I have some deep voter. Uh, town meeting on Tuesday, April 29th, or, and a referendum on Tuesday, May 13th.
Is, is this, for this year, because the date is wrong, did you mean, it says April 29th, 2013?
You know, oh, oh, no, that's a typo, where is that?
The third sentence, third sentence under.
Oh, oh, yeah, she must have copied last year's notice, yeah. It should say 14, sorry.
Would you correct that, Gina?
2014.
We'll move.
Do you want us to read it?
Please, Joe.
All right. Uh, hereby move that quote, be it hereby resolved, the New Milford Town Council authorizes the rest, Mayor Pat Murphy's warrant and convening the annual town meeting to be held Tuesday, April 29th, 2014, at 7:00 P.M. in the E. Hall Martin Room of the Roger Sherman Town Hall at 10 Main Street pursuant to Section 502 of the Charter of the Town of New Milford. The purpose of the meeting is to receive public comment and discussion, and discuss the proposed town government and board of education portions of the budget as prepared by the Board of Finance in and for said town for the ensuing fiscal year, July 1, 2014, 2, and including June 30th, 2015, and to vote on the following motion, open quote, that real estate and non-motor vehicle personal property taxes for property on the October 1st, 2000, is that correct? 13?
Right.
13 grand list be payable in two equal installments due on July 1st, 2014, and January 1st, 2015, except that motor vehicle property taxes and any property tax not in excess of $100 shall be due in a single payment as authorized by Connecticut law, close quote. Be it further resolved that the town council authorize, authorizes and directs the town clerk to timely warrant the budget referendum, and to conduct same on Tuesday, May 13th, 2014, in accordance with Section 707 of the New Milford Charter, close quote.
On favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstained? Uh, the tax collector's action on the refunds?
I'd like to make the motion to approve the April refunds of $5,997.69.
So, all in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstained?
Do you have the resolution for us to sign?
Uh, you, you did some.
Motion for adjournment, I don't matter.
All in favor?
All right.
Opposed? Abstained?